...in touch on safety and I have some emergency for the touch on safety as well. Um, I run on the roads all the time. My chest is between that little pipeline and my breath. But um, is the curb and gutter, and I think that is a foot and a half or two and a half?
Two and a half.
Okay, so that is safe, that will help. I know me as a grown up running by myself, but for kids or anything else has that been proven that that's why I'm not that safe?
Um, you know, the guidelines for the recommendations in that book, that's kind of under ideal situations. Um, I can say that if you look in Greensboro, Chapel Hill, Carboro, a lot of pedestrian minded communities, it is not uncommon to see sidewalk adjacent to the back of curb, you know. Greensboro doesn't.
I've been watching as I drive the town.
And so, and we're just finishing up a project in Chapel Hill right now, and they are very pedestrian minded, and they have a, on SD's Drive, they have a multi-use path that meanders a little bit away, but it will be behind the back of the curb. Separation would be ideal, but you gotta work within the constraints that you have. So it is not unprecedented to see this in that location. Ideally, it would be great to get a little bit more of a physical barrier, but on lower speed roads, and you do have that curb that does act as somewhat of a barrier. So it's not what's shown in that guideline book because that's kind of a, you know, that's kind of an ideal situation. But it's not uncommon or unseen throughout the state to happen in that location.
Okay, and then there'll be a pipe underneath so we may take the water away?
So there-
How does that work? Because the ditch is going out.
Sure, so there will be curb and gutter, and there will be, there will have to be appropriate stormwater pipe installed where necessary. What we have is we have what's considered gutter spread. So whenever you put curb and gutter in as opposed to a shoulder section where it flows into the ditches, after a certain, they'll analyze it and run, you know, certain year storm forecast, and they'll determine what they want is once that water starts spreading out into the road, that's when they have to have some sort of outlet. So they will put in whatever they need to as far as piping, so that discharge water appropriately.
Okay, so it won't flood a yard and it won't, we won't have standing water in the road?
We do not want either one of those, you know. Water is gonna kind of, you know, we're not supposed to, by general statute, we're not supposed to divert water into any area where it's not already going.
Can I check this bridge over here on 220?
Send me an email, I'll send it over to our-
The water was as tall as the car coming home from graduate.
Absolutely. Send that information over to me, I'll send it to the appropriate personnel for them to, for them to look at. And that's a plug as well. If you guys have any problems on NC DOT roads, please let us know because they usually don't heal themselves, and we are, we are on a skeleton route right now. So if you guys are driving roads even more often than we do, so if you guys see anything that's a maintenance issue, please let us know so we can correct it. Because it's like a cavity, it's not gonna heal on its own, so. But that was just a shameless plug to help.
We have skeleton crews.
Over the last ten, eleven years, every time I've called, they've been liked. It's really amazing. Really appreciate all you guys do. It's a lot.
And I know I got off topic there at the end, but like I said, you know, the department kind of has a very constrained role in this, you know. We allow the municipalities to develop and go through this process on their own. We are here for guidance and help if you can need us for anything, but aside from that, we do try to let you guys kind of develop and administer these because you guys are completely inside.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Can I ask you one more question?
Sure.
Could you take a look at this one?
Sure.
This is one of the maps, you know, asking us just now, and I'm not sure. So this is one of the maps that, it looks like it never had some filter on it. Is there a reason why this one wasn't used?
Yes, so that was when I took off in two, I'm sorry, when I took over 2002, I'm sure they were, this was running behind, let me make sure it ends up, the best of the one that was running right in the back of the neighborhood, that's the neighborhood right across from Towne Park.
Yeah, it's right.
This one?
Remember Tim? Tim and Ann, yes, I went to their house and-
At the end of the, I got invited to their master-
Standing in my bathroom, and you're on that trail, you can see in my bathroom window, someone over there stood in his bathroom, and he was exactly correct.
He was.
I said, "The trail will not come through here."
So there was one individual, the French pond privacy, it was out of their master bathroom window and in the backyard because that was a trail route that actually was not picked by Summerfield, that was picked by-
It also-
Gofer County.
Also interfered with the Stafford's Farm property.
Yes.
So one, one citizen had a privacy issue?
Well, we needed eminent domain for that one too. So what we have now does not require eminent domain, but that, any other proposal we had required eminent domain, and you guys all said we don't want to do that. So we picked, hang on, we picked a trail that does not require eminent domain so far, we have to finish this stuff to know for sure.
And did that person, I want to say, did they also threaten to sue if we did that?
No.
That was a different person, I think, that threatened to sue.
There's, but we've tried all kinds of routes, but this is the only way we have across private property.
So my question is, if we decide not to do this, what does it do to which the town for future projects and TGI, are we not looked at favorably anymore, or?
Seventy.
Yeah.
All right, you scrap this project, and then say five, 10 years from now, you want to resurrect your content yet? We'll pick the project, and we'll look with a list of other projects in there, and run it through the participation process. You might get funding in the first round, it could be four rounds when you get funded, and each round is two years.
None.
None. So if you, if you get this opportunity to do it now, it will be years before you can do something.
But I'm not just saying end it now, I'm saying Summerfield Road is not the answer, it's not safe with so many drivers.
Only one that does require eminent domain so far. So if you switch back, we could-
I understand that.
Lynn, you had said earlier about-
Come on, Gail, sit down, it's not your turn. It's not your turn, Gail, just sit down. It's not your turn, Gail, sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would love to make a comment, and I appreciate you now honestly bringing some heart and soul to your comments. And I appreciate you all coming in and really enlightening us, more so than I have expended, and I'm pleasantly, I'm glad you're here. But before I make a comment, I would like to do that in discussion specifically to council, and the best way to do that is for you to make a motion so we can discuss ourselves.
Well, I would have to, I appreciate that, I would ask, do any of you gentlemen have anything else you'd like to share? And if you do, we'd like to hear it now. And if you could, if you wouldn't mind, after you have an opportunity to speak, we're gonna take this matter back to the council, let the council talk about it, but if y'all wouldn't mind being here, being available to answer questions that the council might have as we discuss, we would appreciate that very much.
Yeah, one thing that I was going to say real quick is you guys are fortunate that no funding has been authorized yet, because that's when your clock starts. As soon as you're, as soon as you guys request a right-of-way fund, and they become authorized, you got five years to get the project completed. So my only, my only comment would be, just make, you got a little bit of time, the programming office is not, you know, we can let them know, hey, we're working through this, you know, there's some difficulty, but like I said, you do have a little bit of time before you really have to, you know, really kind of double down on it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then I'm gonna ask the audience, we've tried to be lenient, let everyone have an opportunity to have input, if you will, please hold your comments now, and make this a council matter, and I would look up to the council for either a motion or a discussion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to do the discussion, but after my motion, I move to approve amendment number two to contract CON dash two zero two three zero zero four as presented in the amount of $1,046,095.47, which brings the total contract amount to 778,000, 478.187, proof authorized that outline additional work related to the alignment shift in the seven sections of the AMI Greenway South project.
I'll second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Now we'll pause for further discussion. Both count.
Again, I do appreciate you gentlemen bringing really some passion to your, to your instruction board. My comment is this, it's a thank you, so I proceed, Dr. Smith, maybe three minutes.
Take some deep breaths.
Our comprehensive plan strives for a walkable and bikeable community in cooperation with private sectors, interests, schools, parks, and shopping. It's integrated streets, sidewalks, bikeways, and trails. This is our comprehensive plan. Our UVO addresses the location designer streets and performs applicable pedestrian bike trail plans. It states that a trail shall be installed instead of a sidewalk when identified in a pedestrian bicycle greenway or special area officially adopted when a trail along a roadway segment would connect with existing trails along a joining roadway segment, and when anticipated, demand by bicycles and pedestrians warrants a wider than a sidewalk. This isn't new to most, and in 2000, the town's long-range plan was to participate in joint efforts for hiking across the town, connecting public open spaces, parks, and town centers, joining the community center, and Summerfield Schools to parks and trails. We talked and heard about multi-use pathways. How does the NC DOT define multi-use pathways? And you gave us that document, so I'm gonna share some of the highlights of that document. They're physically separated from traffic built forward, bicycle pedestrian, that's safer for novice child cyclists with a defined origin and a destination. It should not just end leaving people stranded with no nearby connection or trailhead, which we have heard today is in the works for continuation. It should be as, it should be direct as possible, so many would choose a shorter route such as a nearby roadway. Lastly, multi-use pathways by the NC DOT should be between defined locations such as schools, residential subdivisions, and shopping centers. We have an agreement to continue in relation to the Mount Seaside and with the AMI Greenway from the 2020 tunnel. Otherwise, a penalty will follow. Another agreement scope defines this multi-use path from 220 at least to Summerfield Road, I'm sorry, at least Centerfield Road, of Summerfield Road, within a time period of completion. As elected officials, we must uphold what's already been adopted, not ignoring or selectively choosing what we decide to uphold. The council has been getting updates on freeway trails for years. We have council here that has continually approved agreements, planning and engineering, as recent as earlier as this year through 2021. It's irresponsible to spend over a half million dollars and have nothing to show for it. It's not fair to deny existing businesses, the children, families of our community, a connection from a painted tunnel through our town that's safely to a trailhead park. I had a month of research and decided an important topic on water just earlier this year. Everyone has had two and a half months of research about this DOT right-of-way path, not to mention years of already approving. We passed the water tower knowing that this contentious, and not everyone in the community is on board. We should selectively ignore our appointee, uh, trails and open space committee, and the wishes of so many that have said they want a trail on Summerfield Road. Lastly, again, this is not the final determination tonight of this path, but one more step, possibly finally near the end, to know, can we finally make this happen?
See the job, do the job, and shh.
Thank you, sir.
Stay out of misery.
Thank you, Mr. Clay, for not putting all that in your motion. Thank you, Mr. Clay, thank you. Further discussion?
No, I'm not against it at all. When we tabled this originally, it was because of the price for Vandera, and I think Doggett, Duvane, Doggett, Duvane, you know, myself all voted to table it because of the blurring costs of Vandera, and correct me if I'm wrong because I don't want to speak, but, so I still don't know exactly what this cost is gonna be. You know, we know that Vandera has really ballooned like crazy, and to have this project and that project to continue to commit to them is worrisome. Miss Luther, I believe the gentleman from NC DOT, what was your name again?
Steven Robertson.
Robertson, he graciously told us that, you know, the clock really hasn't started ticking, but that we do have a little bit of time if we need it. And Miss Luther has just been hired by his interim manager, who is, also has CPA, does excellent finances. I'd like an opportunity for her to be able to review it. In particular, if, you know, I think Mr. Clay said that there would be a penalty if we don't proceed with it. I'm not saying we don't proceed with it, I'm saying that we have, we get some input financially from her, but I'm also thinking to myself, what is the penalty if we don't proceed with it? It's my understanding that, this is just me thinking out loud, and the discussion here, the benefit of everyone, is that the penalty, I believe, was thirty-some thousand dollars, thirty-two thousand dollars, as opposed to paying 20% of an unknown number. That is a little bit worrisome. The 2012 study, from what I understand from Mr. Landbrake, is outdated. Is that right, Mr. Renter? But at the same time, it also does not seem to favor Summerfield Road in any way, particularly by saying that a multi-use path could go that way, but of course, from what I understand, that could be completely wrong. I always favor, if we can, I mean, honestly, between this and giving money back to people, I mean, I'd like to cut costs wherever we can, because things are getting expensive now, these commitments, I'd favor just watching the taxes or maybe, I should be given a credit, but I think people would probably rather have, most people would probably rather have some sort of credit to their taxes rather than us spending money on the trail. I would favor that, but at the same time, I'm not against this trail. But I do think, I'm not gonna vote for it today due to, there's nothing that's changed since we originally voted to table it due to the blurring costs. It's my understanding from Miss Luther that Mr. Whitaker said there's nothing hot, hot, hot right now. I would table it due to the fact that Mr., I'm sorry, that the gentleman from NC DOT said that we do have a little bit of time with it, and there's, there seems to be some issues with it, and I don't believe there's been, from what I understand, notice given to all the people that would actually affect. So prior to us spending money to study that area, I'd almost like to hear from those people. It sounds as though we changed direction originally because some folks didn't want it, and there might have been one case of eminent domain, I believe is what it was. So based on those, I'm not saying I'm against it, but I'm saying I'd like, I'm not gonna vote for it today.
Other comments? Discussion? Any discussion at all?
Just to add a little bit to the, I think we heard tonight, and I talked to so many town manager candidates, I might be getting a few, but I'm more positive that I was talking with our recently appointed interim manager, that it is frowned upon and unpayable to, to give back those grants that you get further down on the list for future possibilities. And that's, that's, I know we're talking about a thirty, forty thousand dollar hit on top of the half million dollars that we've already spent, nothing to show for it, but that, for future state, for future years, that's gonna put us down the list of potential future funding, and that's, that's a risk that I don't think we should take.
And again, I'm not saying that we abandoned the project. I'm saying that I don't think anything has changed since, from what I understand, we said the costs were polluting on Vandera, and this cost, right, the cost for this project is going to be much more inflated now as well. Not against it, just not wanting to vote for that today until our current county manager slash lines officer has a chance to review it.
And I too am not sold on ending the project and getting bumped down the list for future projects. I'm not sure that there's not a trail option, a better location for Summerfield, but what I don't think is that Summerfield Road is the answer. So I'm not saying end it, give all the money back, that necessarily. I'm saying I just don't think Summerfield Road is the answer.
There's only so much long you can kick and this is it.
We're not under, this isn't it, we're not under time. We've been told all along, pressured to move along because we were told we were under time constraints, but we're finding out tonight we indeed are not.
Any further discussion?
No.
No, I can hold.
Here you go, I'll call the questions. All those in favor of Mr. Clay's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries my vote at three, two. Thank you, gentlemen, very much, Mr. Robinson. As always, great, great to see you. Thank y'all for being here tonight.
Y'all will be soon.
Moving on to item 12B, committee appointments and reappointments with the finance and history committee.
Okay, so I'm trying to do this real quick. John and I, we have a couple of year appointments on the finance committee and the history committee. So what I would like to do is I would like to recommend, based on our interview with Mr. Robbie Gaines, that we move to appoint Robbie Gaines to the finance committee. He's eligible for a membership of a two-year term which would expire in July, or excuse me, on July 1 of 2026. So that's the motion.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here you go, we'll call the question. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Gaines to the finance committee, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is adjourned.
The second thing we wanted to do for the history committee, last time we came together, we voted in Ms. Laura Mortenson as an ex officio member because their seats were filled, and she still wanted to be on the committee. So we did have a member that has stepped off of that committee, and Ms. Mortenson wants now to be appointed as a voting committee member, and Mr. Peterson, the chair, everybody really welcomes Mrs. Mortenson, and she's excited about fulfilling that position. So again, on behalf of Mr. Doggett and myself, we'd like to, or I would like to make a motion to nominate Laura Mortenson as an official member on the history committee, and her membership would be eligible for a two-year term expiring July 1 of 2026.
So begin July 1 of 2024?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion on Ms. Mortenson? Here you go, we'll call the question. All those in favor of appointing Laura Mortenson to the history committee for a period of July of 24 to July of 26, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the motion passes adjourned. Any others?
No, sir, that's all.
Thank you. That concludes item 12B, item 12C. I'm not sure who is to provide this update, but we have a Vandera Farms park update. Did anybody here ask for that to be on there?
I asked for that to be on there, Mr. Mayor, because I was hoping that we would be able to have a little more insight. There was a letter that was put in here, and there were some numbers provided, but I'm gonna move that we tabled this till our next meeting to try to get some more information and possibly get someone for comment.
I don't think we need a motion to table it.
Okay, great.
If there's nothing to discuss-
Then we'll just move on?
We can put it on the next agenda.
Does anybody know anything about any value engineering?
We got this report, but again, we just got it yesterday.
I do not.
So, all right, we'll just move it to the next agenda then.
Okay, item 12B, any reports, updates, or comments?
I had just a couple of quick things. The last time we met, I kept asking for an item to be on there, and everybody said I voted off, but anyway, I just wanted to say that I thought we had a wonderful Founder's Day. I appreciate the community that came and participated. I appreciate the staff that was here and worked to prepare it, worked all that day, did a great job, and everybody, there were smiling faces all around everywhere, and I really appreciate that. And also, I wanted to once again thank the sponsors because they are an important part of Founder's Day. And then, I guess, just lastly, thanks to all the families who came out and participated, and all the little kids, it's so wonderful to see them waiting on the side of the road and saying hello and tossing candy to them. Next, I kind of did that at the beginning, just thanking the volunteers for coming out and helping with the park, cleaning up the bathrooms and the fields and the winters. Okay, just so, I feel like I owe everybody a little bit of an update on the de-annexation, and as everybody knows, it's still rolling off week by week. And I know I've had a couple of questions about how much money was spent on the PR campaign. Council was generous and allowed me a $75,000 bucket. To date, it's $12,200, and there's a couple more dollars in there. And I spent on a direct mailer, it was like $1,200. I'm gonna give you just some round numbers so y'all know where that comes from. There were some binders, and they were, I think, $2,400, and there was a video, and it was $1,700. There, I'm sorry, that, the video was about $3,000. There were some postcards that were distributed to the General Assembly, all houses in Guilford County minus Greensboro and High Point, and then mailers to every town across the state, and that was a little over six grand. So I have them, $10,000, and I appreciate your trust in doing that. I'm actually going to Raleigh tomorrow to speak to some legislators, so I hope everything goes well with that, and that is it.
May I ask a question on your end?
Please.
So, you know, one of our greatest resources, and I've said this before, is our community. We've got 11,000 people in this town. What instruction can you give to all of us? What do we need to do to put this de-annexation at Raleigh to rest? What would you recommend?
Every time I go and talk to anybody in Raleigh, they're always saying, give me FaceTime, continue to call, and continue to send your emails. They love our citizens.
Any other reports, updates, or comments?
Actually, along those lines, Mr. Luthner, I know you've done quite a bit to help us, and you went out there too as well. I appreciate your help with everything. Thank you.
Keep calling Raleigh.
Anyone else? And if someone would like to make a motion to recess, to close session, we would pay that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move for the council to meet in closed session to establish the amount compensation and other material terms of employment contracts pursuant to NCGS 143 dash 318.1185. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that's, I said 85 and I'm gonna add 8.
We approved an agenda.
That's okay.
We approved an agenda and this A3 was included on the agenda, so I would maybe put it here.
We can do both, we'll do A3 and A5. And Ms. Farrelene, I can give you this motion at the end so you can have it.
I've got it right here.
Oh, okay.
I will put the X over here for this motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Folks, we'll be back-